Craven County Board of Commissioners' Regular Session for Monday, November 6th, is now in session. Would you please put your phones on silent? Thank you. Call or roll, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Dacey.
Here.
Chairman Mark.
Here. Will we stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the bountiful blessings that you have bestowed on us as a nation, as a state, and as a county. We ask that you give us courage and conviction, O Lord, to help us through these difficult times that we've had this year with natural disasters and disasters created by man. We ask that you look over our meeting tonight and instill in these commissioners the ability to make clear and just decisions for the citizens of Craven County. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
We've had an opportunity to look over the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye's. The ayes have it. Next is Petition of Citizens. Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes, Sandra Wheeler.
Thank you.
My name is Sandra Wheeler, and I reside at 1207 Longview Drive in the community of Sherwood Forest in New Bern. You might remember me as one of the proponents of the petition to the Board to adopt a resolution around the Equal Rights Amendment. Our presentations and arguments for equality seem to have stalled a bit in the closed session.
Can I stop you for a moment?
Yes.
I have something I'd like to read concerning the ERA.
Oh, okay.
This was passed, a motion, tonight at a work session, as to the legislatures. Over the last several months, Craven County Commissioners have received numerous citizen petitions in reference to the ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment. Specifically, the citizens' petitions have requested action by the Craven County Commissioners v. a formal county resolution to address concerns on their behalf. Those concerns are related to the state of North Carolina's ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment. As we can ascertain from our research, this issue is exclusively under the jurisdiction of the North Carolina General Assembly. Due to this fact, we are asking for you to provide Craven County with a status update on this legislation, and whether you expect it to be considered during the short session of the General Assembly in 2018. And that was signed by myself, and we're asking for them to give us an answer. And the reason for this letter, it was recommended by the committee because we have checked, and there have been no resolutions by any other county. So what we're doing is we're going straight to the legislatures to find out what it is. So I hope that helps right now for the time being.
Awesome. Trailblazers. Very good. We do have some speeches tonight and some individuals who wish to speak to you about some women in Craven County who are outstanding, forceful women, and who have helped to build our society in this neighborhood to its fullest potential. And I think that history will prove, as you folks are about to embark upon, that the tipping point has been reached. We must recognize that no society is free until every one of its citizens shares in the same rights. This trend towards denying equal rights will ultimately result in a loss to all of our citizens, not just the women. Our county has been truly blessed with strong and capable women as leaders and as elected officials, and we would like to enlighten you on those points this evening. We feel it appropriate to begin to highlight some of these women, starting with our 20th Century Women. Thank you for your attention to this issue and for your response to the General Assembly to attempt to get a status update.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, all right. Now, I speak a lot enough. It seems like I can't hear too good.
Is the system working yet?
Mr. Holder's gonna go check to make sure. I think it's, you gotta get really close to that microphone to be heard.
Pat Chilko, Mr. Chairman?
We're back again. Thank you for listening to us. We really appreciate it. I'm Pat Chilko, 1707 Spencer Ave. And New Bern is a very kind and friendly community, and as a representative of Democratic women, we believe that it's important to reach out in love to citizens of all political persuasions. And in that spirit, tonight, we want to hold up several of our Republican and Democratic ladies who are our role models. We'd like to hold up Jean Preston, who served seven terms in the North Carolina House and three terms in the North Carolina Senate. She was preceded by Scott Thomas and succeeded by Norman Sanderson. Part of that time, she represented Craven County, and she served until about a year before her death at 77. We want to hold up Ella Bangle, a four-term alderman and a two-term mayor of New Bern, who also served New Bern in multiple other capacities, and was awarded the Order of the Longleaf Pine. We want to hold up Eva Gladden Simmons, who was a Havelock City Commissioner for 29 years and was considered by many the matriarch of Havelock. She also was awarded the Order of the Longleaf Pine. And we want to hold up Jane Crofton Atkinson, who was the first woman elected to countywide policymaking office. She served on the Board of Ed. Let's see. And was an instructor at Craven Community College and Director of Planning. She received the college's Excellent in Teaching Award. That's it. These are both Republican and Democrats, and some of them switched parties, which we think, we're really hoping that it won't be such a partisan issue, because I'm sure you see how bad that is for the country. And so we're trying to find things that we can agree on in common. And I, we think that the ERA could be one of them.
Okay. Thank you. Valerie Truitt?
My name's Valerie Truitt. I live at 2407 Bryce's Creek Road in Craven County. The woman leader that I want to bring to your attention tonight is Barbara Lee. I'm sure all of y'all know Barbara. She has been an active Democrat in Craven County for many years. She is a native New Bernian. She was the first African-American woman to be elected to the New Bern Ward of Aldermen. There had been women before. Ms. Kathleen Oringer was one of them, and they've been African-Americans. Lee Morgan was one of them, and she was the first African-American woman. She served 22 years as Ward Five Alderman and was appointed in 2012, when Representative William Wainwright died in office, and she filled out his term. So she has served as a representative of Craven County in the General Assembly. Mrs. Lee has been a tireless proponent of the civil rights movement and supports the ERA. She attended the March on Washington in 1963 as a teenager. She serves on the New Bern Housing Authority, recently organized an African-American male summit in the city, is the Executive Director of the 21st Century Community Learning Center After-School Program, and the Area Day Reporting Center Daytime Youth Program. She has been an advocate for citizens, perhaps underserved citizens, in Craven County for many years, and should be recognized for contributions. And I'd like to mention, when my mother was born in 1908, she had no hope at that point of being able to vote. In two years, we're going to come up on the anniversary of the passage of the amendment that gave my mom the right to vote. But throughout her life, she never was considered equal with my father, except, of course, by my father. We're going to continue to fight for equality where we need to fight for equality. And I appreciate y'all listening to us and giving us this forum so that we can remind people that until we're all equal, none of us are equal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Wan Sider?
My name's Linda Wan Siedler. I live at 1987 Acorn Drive in New Bern, which is Bryce's Creek area. I really don't need this, since y'all wrote a letter, but I do want to say that I do think women should be equal. I'm glad that you're becoming a leader. Craven County's on become a leader in this. If I take in this step, writing, finding out what they're going to be doing, I hope you will continue to follow up on it. I feel very strongly about women. And my question to you is, what are you going to tell your wife? What are you going to tell your daughter? What are you going to tell your granddaughter, your nieces, your mother, if this doesn't work out for women? Because women do deserve equal rights, and I think your wife will tell you that, too. Thank you.
Claire Troutman?
I'm Claire Troutman, 110 Bowline Road in Riverbend, part of New Bern. There have been many women who have worked for politics in Craven County, and one of these is Jean Hawkins Nelson, a New Bern native who became the first female Craven County Commissioner in 1992, when she was appointed to fill the seat of deceased Commissioner Charlie Potter. Ms. Nelson was best known as Regional Coordinator for Southeastern Region of the North Carolina Council on the Status of Women, an organization that spearheaded the establishment of councils on women in the eastern region of North Carolina. She, in Craven County, she organized the council that evolved into Promised Place and Coastal Women's Shelter. Ms. Nelson was a member of the Craven County Board of Elections for 16 years, until she resigned from the board to fill the commissioner's seat. She was active in the Craven County Democratic Party until her death in 1998. Ms. Nelson was recipient of the Order of the Longleaf Pine. As a woman who I admire, said recently, "We are not seeking extra rights or additional rights, but only equal rights with men." I feel very strongly that this was not included in the Fourteenth Amendment, and we need to have the ERA passed. Thank you.
Ray Griffin?
Hey, Mr. Complish Ray Griffin, Banff, North Carolina. It's a sad day, tragic day, and like Brother Steve was saying, this tragedy was been happening. But I want you to think for me, what example we are setting for our children, why these tragedies have come upon us. Think about education with the devil. It's an accepted fact that we are living in the most insane age of human history. The high pressure and the pace of times have produced a generation of high-stress, tense people, hungry people that never cease to amaze us. We see this supposed educational lottery appealing to the dark side. A bat goes through a window, then it comes in and changes into a vampire with a bright red face, a black cape, and stamps. We need something to sink our teeth into. What an example for our kids. And then there's another educational, supposed educational lottery. We see a bright, bushy-haired lady looking like a ghost from the past, running through a barn, looking for a knife or something to chop off an arm, and all of a sudden, a hand comes through the door, and what does she do? Takes that finger off and breaks it and uses it for a scratchboard. That's education, that we have educational lottery. It's sad. Change and decay is all around us. Eighty-eight thousand Americans have died of alcohol abuse, and we sell it every day, and you guys reap money and benefit out of it. Have you ever thought that the money you benefit out of is killing someone? Eighty-eight thousand. Sixty-five thousand died. We talk about drug overdose and opioid, but yet more die of alcoholism than they do drug, opioid. Seven-five percent, 7.5% of our teenagers expend with alcohol to get to the opioid epidemic. Here we see the devil, he's getting in here to seek for work, and we must realize we have made some mistakes, but that doesn't excuse our mistakes. Education without God makes man a clever devil. Sad that we see what's on our TV. It's time today to draw the lines and make men face the issues that we have too long dwelt with and set aside. We have today spiritual half-truths. We have moral twilights. We are now mixing the world with the truth. For all too often, we have the facts, but still lacks the fire. Neglecting the truth will smother the fire. Today, we have a lot of weary hearts, discouraged souls, needy people, or looking for someone with a fire, someone who has kept a glow in the spirit of the world, the flesh and the devil, that we will do away with these things that are happening. The lottery is not, I understand you guys tell me that you get very little out of the lottery, not enough to even make a difference, is what I'm understanding. Educational lottery, and that's a great education, to use the devil for experience, to draw money. In that same, we have let down our guard, and the devil has taken over. Sadly, we see what happened in our church world. Twenty-six people died yesterday. Rampant winds, shooting. Someone with a moral, you crave the mind, that went in and did what he did, and it's sad that we see what's going on. We have traded lies for money. I saw one of the news the other day, where Mayfield Apostles said they wanted to pass the brunch bill for one reason, just for revenue, just for dollars. Isn't it sad that we change dollars for alcoholism, or we change dollars to make money? And you guys probably say you make a lot of money out of alcoholism, but have you ever thought about the money it costs for rehabilitation, the jail systems, and all of these things? And you reap a lot of money, but you spend a lot of money. You just took $150,000, I think, to increase the prison system. So what are we really doing? Exchanging souls for money. Sad in this world, isn't it? Sad. Educational lottery. Now, what kind of child can watch those kind of ads on TV and think it's educational? I think all of you agree with me there. Somebody needs to do something about this lottery and situation. It's a sad world we live in. What an example we're presenting to our kids. Amen?
Thank you.
Hal James?
I'm Hal James. I live at 305 Calico Drive, and I'm a spokesperson for the Coastal Carolina Tax Payers Association. And what I want to talk with you about tonight is the tall structures ordinance that you gave some study to during your work session today. And I want to commend you for the decision to look further and study more about this ordinance before you actually draft one or approve one. I've been in a lot of conversation with John Rose, and he's a scientist, and I would venture to say he's also an expert in these tall structures. He's told me that he has evaluated over 200 of them across the country. He's worked out a scoring system at which he's applied to 110 of them. And here's a little bit about his comments. He says, "County legislators have a statutory obligation to protect the health, safety, and welfare of their constituents." And of course, that's what the ordinance would be focused on. He said that there are two essential ingredients for a local landlord to meet the North Carolina General Statute requirements form, and one of them is the law requires that it address these key money issues, setbacks, which y'all were talking about, acoustics, property value guarantees, I heard you speak about that, too, environmental tests, and the decommissioning of them. And he said, "There are proper requirements for each one of these issues, and they are required to be based on science and to be legally defensible." So he worked out this rating system of 1 to 20, and he applied it to the current ordinance. So I'm not talking about what y'all proposed to do or what you're looking at now, but what the current one is. And he said on four of those five criteria, that he gives you a zero. He gives that ordinance a zero. And on the last one, which is the decommissioning score, he said he scored 15 out of 100 points. So it's a total of 15 out of 100 points. And he said to me that that puts that particular ordinance in the lower 5% of all the ones that he's evaluated. And he also told me that he's offered to come before the board and give you the benefit of his experience and why he felt that, but that's such a poor ordinance. And he will apparently agree, because he decided already to go back and review it, and even talked about today a moratorium possibility until you settled, get all of this settled. So I mean, he's turned it over to staff. I think that's a wise decision, but I also think that you ought to hear out John Rose on it, and he's offered to be heard. I think it'd be a great idea to listen to what he has to say about it. Thank you.
Forgive me. I'm sorry.
Jody Lones, 202 Cindy Lane, Havelock. Good news, I'll cut some of the big chunks I was going to say out, since you guys have already decided to take action. I wanted to thank the Board for taking some, the initiative to research the issue, and especially the Chairman Mark for forming the committee. I also want to thank Commissioner Simpson for his keen insight. It's true that a threat to one person's right is a threat to all of us, which brings me to one thing I would like that I haven't to address about the ERA that I haven't seen addressed. It is to prevent sex-based discrimination. It also helps protect the rights of men, and therefore has the potential to help both sexes. It's simply a level of the playing field. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Costanz?
I am so sorry.
It's too many vowels. Robert Costanzo, 128 New Chatel Road. Mark, is that okay?
That's all right. My name is Mark, and you'd be surprised what I get.
Yeah, that's okay. It's still 128 New Chatel in New Bern. As a resident of Craven County, I just would encourage you to take a more positive look at the ERA statement. I appreciate what you've done. I think it's a, it's a step forward, certainly. One of the things about legislating and being in the position of a legislator, you need to not only find out what's going on, but to express your opinions. What is your opinion on the ERA? Do you believe in equal rights for women? Do you believe in equal rights for your wife, your child, your daughter, your granddaughter? I suspect we all do. So, as the prior speaker said, I do appreciate all that you've done. You've made the first step. I would just encourage you to be legislators. Vote. Tell us what you would stand for. Tell our wives what you stand for. Don't stand in the shadows. Thank you very much for your time.
That's it?
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which consists of approval of the minutes of October 16th, regular session, September 22nd, reconvened session. Also, tax releases and refunds. The Board will request to approve tax releases and refunds, request for road addition resolution, and request for Proclamation of American Indian Heritage Month. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is ABC Board.
Can you hear me? We're doing all right? Okay, very good. My name's Brian Gatchell, and I'm here on behalf of your ABC Board. We are asking for Board action this evening to, for your approval for us to retain $270,000 of ABC gross receipts for the purposes of a capital project to purchase land for a new store in Bridgeton, in, on Highway 17, in between Pine Streets and Academy Streets. The statute suggests that we come to you and ask for your approval to do that. We have worked a very long process to get with you today. The last parts of that process, we have worked with your subcommittee, and I believe that we have garnered their approval. We have worked very closely with your staff, and I wanted to say a brief word of commendation. Mr. Baumgartner, Mr. Baker, and your county manager provided us a lot of detailed technical information, free of charge, or at least they haven't sent us an invoice yet, that positively affected our negotiations in this process. We have the land under contract. Your approval is one of the conditions of the contract. We have not begun our due diligence. You know, it's kind of like a nine-inning baseball game. We're at the very beginning of that, in the first inning. As the appointing authority, if we did not have your approval, we would, did not want to spend money on due diligence, because that can be quite expensive. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you may have, but in summary, we are looking for an up or down vote.
We have a letter on file from the town of Bridgeton, supporting the Craven County Alcohol Beverage Control Board's request to locate an ABC store within the town of Bridgeton, North Carolina. Are there any questions by the Commissioners? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that this Board grant the authority to the ABC Board. If you, in fact, need our authority to do that, do you need it?
What we need is permission to take ABC money, gross receipts, and retain it as working capital for a capital project.
Okay.
So no county money. We're not asking that. We're just asking to be able to retain.
Second. I think we need a roll call vote.
I'd like to make a statement here. Personally, I don't drink alcohol, but I don't want to deny other people the right to drink it. And another thing, I feel like being a Christopher Soul such a long time that certain things people might not like about what I do, and I want the opportunity to do things like I want to do. And Jesus also lets you do what you want to do. So, are we a vote for?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment as well.
Yes.
I don't disagree at all with what the Reverend said earlier. There's more people die of alcoholism in this country, unfortunately, than die of opiates and other drugs combined. But it is legal in this country, and even when it was not legal, people managed to get it. So, you know, I feel like in the state of North Carolina, that it, sale of alcohol is regulated, and to the extent that it can be regulated. And I think that the ABC Board does a pretty good job. I'm not making this vote based on the fact that the county does get some revenue from the sale of alcohol, but it is regulated. the sale of alcohol, but it is a regulated product, and that being as it is, I'll give a big vote yes.
Okay.
Like Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner? Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Craven County Register of Deeds, Sherri Rich.
Good evening. Happy November. It's here already.
Daylight saving time.
Oh, and I hate it. I just really do not like this. So, a lot of people know or think they know what we do in the Register of Deeds office. They're pretty sure they know about deeds, may know about deeds of trust, maps, plaques, yeah, they kind of sort of know we do that. But a lot of people don't realize that we also record the most important documents that a veteran has, and that is their DD-214 discharge papers. These papers are needed for multiple things throughout the years, but one of the most important things they're needed for is when the veteran dies. The widow or widower has to be able to put their hands on those documents quickly. If not, they don't get the full military funeral that they're entitled to. But the veteran throughout the years will need them for various benefits. When they get out of the service, they're given these documents, and some say, "Yeah, I think they told me maybe I should have recorded them somewhere." But they take them home, they put them in a drawer, they put them in a box. When they need them, they can't find them. So, we record those documents. We keep them on file forever, free of charge to the veteran. If they will bring them in, they will always know where they can get that document. But a lot don't. So as an incentive to get, how many of y'all are veterans? I knew you two were. So as an incentive to get some of you to come in and bring your DD-214s and get them recorded, we have started a Thank a Vet program. What that will do is if the veteran brings in their DD-214, or if they've already recorded it, that's fine too, we're going to issue them a photo ID, a special Craven County Thank a Vet photo ID. They will in turn be able to take that ID to various participating businesses. We're up to pushing 65 right now businesses that have signed on to partner with us. And, I mean, we've got some big ones. We've got Lowe's, we've got, you know, lots of good businesses. And all of this is free of charge to the veteran. Our big kickoff to start this, to start giving, issuing the IDs, is Wednesday, day after tomorrow. At 8:30 in the morning, we'll be doing it 8:30 in the morning till 4:30 in the afternoon. We have actually a couple of volunteers who are going to come in and help with traffic control. We don't know exactly what to expect as far as how many veterans we'll have, but smaller counties than we are have had 250 on that one day. So, we don't know what the weather's going to do. Rain may, may, you know, slow it down a little bit, but we're really, really proud of this program. And I want to really thank my staff, who have worked so hard. I may have come up with the decision to do this, but my staff kicked it into gear and got it done. So we just wanted to let y'all know if any of y'all are available on Wednesday, want to come shake some hands, want to tell everybody, you know, we're glad you're here, that would be awesome. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to thank our Register of Deeds because this is not something that was required by the state.
No.
There's what, 10 or 15 counties?
I'm not sure how many there are. It's probably pushing 15 or 20.
But we thank you. There are a lot of veterans in our community, and it's a very good thing that you're doing.
And can I ask if there are any veterans out here who would like to have, if you want to? Michelle has some brochures, if anybody's interested. Thank you.
Sherri, excuse me.
Yes.
Would you mind at all if those of us that have got Facebook pages would post this stuff up there tonight?
Oh, I would love it. In fact, if you'll go on...
Stevie can hit about 1,000 people in a nanosecond through this stuff.
Well, he was kind enough to have me on his show.
Yeah.
And we discussed this. But if you will go on the Craven County website, to my part of the website, there's a Thank a Vet thing, and it gives you everything you need to know.
Let's go ahead.
So that would be awesome.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, matters economic development, Timothy Downs.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Well, I'm happy to report that our road project is nearly complete. What you have in front of you tonight is a budget amendment, but I'm also happy to report this isn't any, asking for any new money. It's, from what I understand, from our finance department, it's really a, an accounting, mechanical kind of thing that we have to do because we're taking money from the general fund and putting it into this budget fund, which was created earlier this year. So essentially what we have is we've got three change orders during this project. One was, the first one was to install piping in underneath, underneath the new roads that will allow us to easily and without damage to the new road, install water infrastructure when we actually develop those parcels. The second change order was to actually clear the vegetation from about 43 acres of the Lot 19, which is the big parcel that's out there where these roads will provide access. And the last one was to reinforce the soil. We've talked many times about our industrial park, and one of the weaknesses of it is the soil, and we found that out during the project to develop or to build this road. And without doing extensive testing prior to building the road, there's really no way to know this until you actually go out there and they do compaction and testing of the soil and that sort of thing. So, those are the three change orders. All the work is complete. I know at least a couple of you were out there last week for the BSH ribbon cutting, and I hope you saw that it is nearly complete and is, looks good to me. So hopefully you all will agree with approving this budget amendment, and I'd like to, with the manager's permission and with a little planning, maybe we'll have a ribbon cutting out there sometime soon for the new road.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second? Any discussion? Any questions by the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I just had one little question here.
Yes, Vice Chairman.
There was a, the last item of the three, kind of the more expensive one. Can you explain, is this a cost that we would have incurred whether we, irrespective of, I mean, let's say that, would this cost have been part of the original plan if we'd have known that this had to have been, that the area had been treated the way that it is now? Or is it something that, because of the way that the project has just gone on over time that we've now incurred, and it was something that was completely unexpected?
Well, it certainly was not unexpected simply because of the soil test, the soil testing that we've had done out there in the previous years. But the specific need where the road lies and the work that was done to build the road, it was unknown where this was going to occur. So essentially what's happened is when they prepare the subgrade to lay down the asphalt, and as they're doing that, the Department of Transportation comes out and tests where the road is being built, and they have what they call a compaction test. And when they go out there and test portions of the road, they get results, and in some of the spots for our roads, the results were not sufficient to meet DOT standards. And that was one of the requirements for this project, is that would ultimately the roads would be turned over to DOT. So, we could have done testing in, during the design phase, but even at that point, it wouldn't have been conclusive to determine exactly where, unless you tested, you know, every 10, 15 feet, whatever. I'll also say, and I think county manager and assistant county manager can confirm this, we've got Duane Alligood as our construction manager for this project, and he has been outstanding to work with, and he's been very thorough in his review and very thorough with the contractor. So I feel great confidence that we've minimized as many costs as we could and not incurred any additional costs. And one other point, you know, it's, I don't have a complete accounting of all the funds spent, but for instance, the change order number one, that work was actually much more valuable than $5,000. But what happened was because of some rearranging of the contract, some reengineering of the work that needed to be done out there, some monies were taken away from the contract, and then with this work that had to be done to put the pipes in, we only had a small cost to actually get that work done, if that makes sense. So I think the answer to your question is, we might have expected it because we know the soils out there are not good, but specifically where and how much, we would have never known.
Thank you.
And also, don't, or, it's caused of what is being put out there, what you speculate on. If you not speculate on it, heavy duty equipment, heavy building on a certain place, then you will not spend that amount of money in a place that you might have, you don't have, you really don't have to have.
That's correct. That's correct.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, what you call the roll?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is appointments, pending, current, and upcoming. Appointments will be effective immediately unless otherwise specified. Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. Did you get any letter from the COG on the adult care?
No.
I don't know if it's a rumor. I heard that the state is going to now approve appointments to this board. I don't know if that's, would you know anything about that, Vice Chairman?
No, sir.
Okay. In the meantime...
We have an ECC meeting, I think this week. I can make an inquiry at that point.
Okay. In the meantime, we could use four or five volunteers for that board. I believe we have five members on that board right now?
Yes.
And we could use another four or five. It's a very important board that goes around visiting the adult care homes and makes sure that the people in those homes are getting the things that they deserve. And if anybody would like to volunteer for it, you can get an application on our website, or you can get an application here, and we would be happy to entertain you being on there. It requires you going out maybe twice a month to visit the homes and talk to some of the residents in the homes, and make sure that they're being taken care of. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Mr. Chairman, I can report that we had actually made an appointment for Jan Hood's seat, and that appointment is now, has been seated, and so that name really needs not to be there any longer.
Okay.
Tony Lee, not designated as a law enforcement official, although he is one. Recommendations are forthcoming. I believe I spoke with an outstanding candidate just this evening. I'm looking right at him. And he's going to be providing his paperwork, and we will be able to take up his nomination at the next meeting.
Okay, good. Jury commission? We have two applications. One is Timothy Mason. The other is James T. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I can offer just a little bit of clarification for this. The county manager had reached out to me when you were, I think, away, because there was a miscommunication as to whether or not you had indeed identified anybody, and had asked me to go ahead and try to find an individual to fill that spot. Evidently, you did identify an individual before I even started looking, and Mr. Mason. And so obviously, only when we got back today and coordinated things a little bit more did I find out that Jim's application was probably not necessary, and that you had already identified an individual. So with that, I just wanted to let people know why you've got two of these applications before you. I did get in touch with Jim, and I let him know about the little hiccup on our end, and while he's happy to, you know, serve our community wherever he can, he did understand.
Mr. Chair, I spoke to Jim Davis the other day. He said that he'd like to be on the jury duty commissioner. I met him on base, and he said he'd like to be appointed for that position.
Okay.
And I appointed Jim Davis to represent the jury duty commissioner.
Well, I also would like to appoint Timothy Mason, as I actually spoke to him before, and I thought, Vice Chairman Dacey explained it very well. Unfortunately, I was away. I had spoken to him, and I left without getting, he said yes he would do it, but I didn't get the application to him until I got back. So that was the reason for the...
Mr. Chair, what date was the application you got?
Excuse me?
What's the date of the application?
What's the matter? What's the date?
Mm-hmm.
I got it when I got back.
What day was that?
I don't know. Friday, Saturday?
This is November the 1st.
Oh, he dated it November the 1st.
Oh, well.
Does that matter?
I appointed Jim Davis to be jury commissioner.
Well, I think it's a vote at this point.
Commissioner Jones?
Davis.
Commissioner Liner?
Mason.
Commissioner McCabe?
Davis.
Commissioner Sampson?
Davis.
Commissioner Tyson?
Mason.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Mason.
Chairman Mark?
Mason. We have a term ending Ronald, Donald Rotman, appointed 2013.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, do you know where he comes from, which...
What?
I am not sure, but I did ask the emergency services director's office to check on that for us, and I have not heard back from them.
Okay. All right, we'll continue on that then. Upcoming appointments for December are Clean Sweep Committee, EMS Advisory Council, Health Board, Havelock Library, New Bern Library, Ransboro Library, and Commissioners' appointments.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
I have four matters to report on this evening. The first concerns the final acceptance of an offer that the county previously received for the purchase of 214 Lawson Street. The county and the city previously received tentative, or made tentative approval of an offer in the amount of $1,125 for this property. It was acquired through tax foreclosure. The total amount of taxes and costs foreclosed upon were $3,420.67, and the current tax value of the property is $4,500. The offer was advertised, and no upset bids were received. And we've attached a resolution for the county to finally accept this, this offer, if it chooses to do so.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes, have it.
The second matter concerns an initial offer to purchase property located at 509 Broad Street that the county received. The offer was in the amount of $109,000. This proper, property formerly housed the probation office. I believe the tax value of the property is $310,600. And should the county accept this offer, the property would then be advertised for upset bids. Once no further upset bids were timely received, the county would be able to finally accept or reject the offer. In addition, I'm going to defer to the county manager to discuss them.
Yeah, I think we should.
For taking ownership of this property.
Yes, sir. Well, this is the second offer you've had in this many months. It's about 20,000 more, 25,000 more than last month. It's hard to judge the value of something. The building is in rather poor condition. Certainly, there's been a sale across the street of property recently, just raw land, which would be in this ballpark, I think. I think the biggest concern is someone's going to have to spend money to deal with the building, one way or the other. You take it down or refurbish it. You know, I don't have a magic line of what's appropriate, what's not. It's in a tough market. It's sort of in between downtown and on that Broad Street corridor. It does, however, offer a lot of parking, which is something that's a premium, as we know from discussions going on in the city of New Bern. I'm on the fence. I mean, it's right there on the borderline.
Based on what you're saying, and based on the market out there in this particular building... building, we've had it for a number of years now, I'm getting the feeling that you're recommending we accept this offer.
I'm pretty close. I think the, there's two things that can happen. One is, you know, this could be the only bid you get. It's 109,000, which is fairly good price for this property. Second thing is, you're going to start the upset bid process and you could have some people that come in that may bid higher. I will tell you, Mr. Hodges had a rather active week with this property last week. I believe he received four different individuals calling him and he's got several showings scheduled. He is informing folks that, you know, we are receiving offers, so they're paying attention to that as we move forward, so.
All right, so then your recommendation would be to put this out for bid again?
I think, I think so.
I have a motion?
So move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What's the motion? I'm sorry. What's the motion, to accept or reject?
To put it out for bid.
You always have the option, even after upset bids, to reject this. I mean, this would, you could view what the process is, come back and not accept it during the final...
Mr. Chairman, what I think I'm hearing the county manager say is that by us accepting this and then allowing for the upset bid process to begin its activity, that that might foster more interest in the property itself, creating an environment that we get a better bid out of the process.
But, but did you also say that we did not have to accept this even after we accepted?
Once, you're starting the upset bid process, it'll come back for final acceptance like the first one. You can say no there. That's your option.
So we don't have to take the highest price that's offered to us once the upset bid process starts?
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, of course the increments, I mean, of course the percent that they have to raise the bid. Five percent. Well, we rejected it last time, we've got 20 more thousand.
Right.
If you accept it, you're saying they ain't got the up to the five percent.
Well, then, that may go several turns. I mean, this party may be really interested in wanting to keep going. We've seen some of these go as many as six and seven times. Just depends, I mean, it's, you know...
Each time, you got to go five percent more.
With tax foreclosures, for example, it's five percent or I believe $750, whichever's larger in the tax foreclosure concept. We have had bids start out in the twenties and end up in the sixties or seventy thousand dollars and the upset bid period just went on for months and months.
They don't have to go five percent. I mean, they could, the next bidder can go more than that. That's their prerogative.
Could go less, too.
Could, well, I don't know that they can't. Can't go less.
Yeah. But I think the key, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I think the key is here, it's going to cost us to do it regardless, to put it back out for upset bid, but we have the authority and the right to retract any bid to come in, even though it's $5,000 above it. We can reject it.
Yep.
And start all over and keep it like we did because it's still lower than what we had three years ago.
Correct.
Okay. What's your favor?
Are you asking for a vote or more commentary?
I'm asking for a motion.
Just give you a motion.
Okay. Have a motion.
Motion wants to accept?
My inclination would be to reject the bid and continue advertising, but I'm, that's just, you know...
Okay, that's one.
I'm going to go with the relative.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What's the benefit? I'm trying to understand the benefit. If we reject it, what's, what's the benefit in going out for an upset bid?
In my mind, the property is worth more than 109,000.
Oh, I don't know about that.
And it's worth more than 109,000 in increments, so, I mean, that's, I think that, I think you're going to get more money for it. I hope you're going to get more money for it if you put it back out on the market.
But, Mr. Chairman?
What's it listed for now?
We don't, we don't list it.
Okay, so it doesn't have a price on it?
We offer people...
What's the tax value on it?
Three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred dollars.
Well, we know that's not realistic. Good thing we're not paying taxes on it.
Okay, but I guess Commissioner Tyson, what I'm, again, when I'm, what I think I'm hearing the county manager say is that if we accept this bid, then it goes out automatically for upset bid proposals. So we will still get people that are interested coming in. Now, if somebody hears that we've accepted this bid, will that put a chill on, on folks or will that inspire them? I just, I'm looking for the dynamics here and, you know, absent, absent having anything like that, I have to side with...
It's a tough one. I mean, certainly it puts pressure that you guys have put one on the table. I mean, the perception would be that if you accepted it in the initial part, that you would accept it final if it stays. So that could either mean that this is the market price, this is as much as anybody would pay, or we're going to start bidding and this is our time to move.
So that really is the question that we have to ask ourselves is, if this, through the upset bid price, it does not go up any further, are we willing to accept this number?
But you don't have to.
But I know that, but...
Correct.
Do you know the size of the property roughly, Gene? Is it an acre, three quarters?
The, the, the land itself is a half an acre.
Point five oh seven acres.
Parkland's probably a half an acre.
I mean, that's, that's the whole lot. I mean, with buildings in the middle of it, that's a, that's a half an acre.
This piece directly across the street for it was an acre and it sold for 160, 165, I think, about 80,000. I'm just giving my opinion, guys. Everybody's got one.
Yeah, but yours is... So what's the motion going to be now?
Motion.
Yeah, well, I got a motion, he reject also.
That neither one paid it.
Did we have a second on the motion?
No, we didn't have a second.
If we start, Mr. Chair, if we got to start paying for parking around here, much different people to keep it from parking lot. It's worth 100,000 dollars.
What's it costing us to just keep the thing as it is right now?
A lot.
I mean, you're looking, we, we still keep lights on on it, but you got very, you still have to keep your HVAC working, try to fight mold goo. I mean, you're talking maybe fifteen thousand a year, maybe? And you got different repairs, so you got to be, you still have to install water, you got to pay on it.
Yeah. I think I'm, I'm going to go with Stephen at this point. I think that we could...
We don't have a motion either way, so...
Well, since you reject my motion, so I withdraw my motion then.
What's your motion, Steve?
I need a motion? Well, my motion would be for the county manager to put it back up for advertising for sale.
I'll second it.
Okay. You have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, it's gone.
The third matter concerns the initial offer that the county has received to purchase property located at 1221 Main Street. County and the city have received an offer in the amount of $1,000 for this property. It was acquired through tax foreclosure. Total taxes and costs foreclosed upon were $2,861.19. The current tax value is $4,000. As usual, should the county accept this offer, the property will be advertised for upset bids. Once no further upset bids received, the county can accept or reject the file.
Okay. I have a motion?
So move. Don't get rejected.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And lastly, the initial offer the county received for property located on Main Street, this is Parcell 8-013-198. County and the city both received an offer in the amount of $1,000. This property was also acquired through tax foreclosure. Total taxes and costs foreclosed upon were $3,208.19. The current tax value is $4,000. Again, should the county accept the offer, upset bids will be advertised.
Motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Managers Report.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. I have three items for you tonight. Two announcements, just to make you aware, tomorrow is election day for most municipalities of Craven County, with the exception of New Bern. They have an election in October, so our staff downstairs is working really hard to get everything prepared and hopefully have a flawless, seamless process tomorrow. I did want to remind the board that on November 10th, which is this Friday, Craven County will be closed due to Veterans Day. We will reopen on Monday and be ready for business. And one part of just general update, I did want to make the board aware, I did attend a New Bern Parking Committee meeting last week. I was invited by that committee to attend and offer comments about their recommendations to the Board of Alderman in reference to a parking plan they've been dealing with through their committee. I was thankful that they allowed because I did have a lot of questions and thoughts about it. Certainly, our operation here in Craven County with the courthouse is very unique. It's not like other parts of downtown New Bern where we're more of a destination for folks to come. We are not an area of commerce or tourism or restaurants or anything like that. We're certainly a place where the public does business. We believe this is the public's building here. They have the right to use this as they please and come visit us when they want. We certainly also heard from our elections director and our clerk of court and then some other folks who own property on Broad Street, not affiliated with government, but generally, we want to be more open to government than less. We want less restrictions for people to get here, less barriers for folks to do business with the county. I've asked that, that committee to take these things into consideration and also work with the county. I am concerned that the only areas for paid parking in New Bern would be the 200 and 300 block of Broad Street, which are the two blocks in front of our building. I think that certainly hampers our ability to do business and also what those changes will mean for our business, how we now have to police our parking lots, how we now have to instruct people on to use the kiosk that the city of New Bern put out front. I just want to make you aware of my comments. That's the general thing. There was a lot more questions asked for the data they used for their decision-making, but certainly it's a well-publicized issue. Commissioner Dacey did attend with me that day. He happened to be in town and did sit there, so I thought the, they were receptive.
More than sat.
He sat there and, yeah, and certainly accompanied me, but...
Thank you, George.
At this point, there's no decision, though.
I understand they will be meeting again tomorrow to wrap up whatever work they're doing to make their final recommendations.
And that will have to go to the Board of Alderman.
It will. And I believe they've set a date in November to do so. Some available for questions on that or any other subjects you may have?
Any questions for the county manager?
Yeah, I would like to ask, I mean, as a, and I'm opposed to, by and large, parking decks, but I think they're the ugliest things on the planet and there is no way to fix that ugly. I've seen it tried, but is that in the discussion? I hope not, but...
Sir, I got to tell you, my engagement was very limited to the period of time I was able to make comment. I did not hear them reference that as they gave an overview, but I'm certainly sure they looked at all things. I mean, I just don't know.
Where would they put a parking deck?
And, Mr. Chairman, just for a note on the agenda, the closed session's no longer needed, sir. We will table that matter to a later time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners Reports. Commissioner McCabe.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I still was teed on what I'm going to say, but anyway, I'd like to say about the tragedy that happened in Texas and we all have to go, no matter where you go, we all have to be more visible out there, whether churches, schools, or malls, no matter where you go. So please be very, very visible what's going on around you. Don't be a ton of visual because right now this world is getting bad and bad and worse. So the churches pretty soon have, saw carrying weapons pretty soon and it's bad. But nevertheless, God has said good and you got the devil out here, he can be out here. But everybody, please pray for the victims and, and try to keep God in your heart as much as possible and try to help one another because we here for one thing, to love. We're going to all of them go one day, so let's everybody pray for the victims in Texas and just continue praying for all of us, that we be safe every day and thank God for everything they do for all of us because who would be him if he wouldn't be here today? No matter how much money you got, who you are, you're going to go. Thank you.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes. I would like to offer congratulations to Craven County School Nutrition Program. We say Healthy U.S. School Challenge Award for all 25 of their school at the North Carolina Department of Public Instructional School Nutrition Service. The school nutrition on October the 28th provided students with more nutrition, healthier choices and, and their choices, activity program. So we, we would just like to commend our, our 25 schools in Craven County who received this award. Also, I was thinking about our gas going up somewhat in Craven County, but then I was down in Texas over the weekend and I found that they had a lot of gas guys down there and said some about, some of the stations down there was, had gone up $10 for a gallon. And so they'll be, the government down there is thinking about the diet for some of those stations, just doing the guard, most of the stations just doing the guard, all of the stations are doing the guarding down there. So I hope they don't have to come here and they going up $10 a gallon, I had to walk. But, uh, it seemed like the government down there is concerned about the citizens, they don't want to see the citizens being guards at the filling station because people, you had lined, they had, they had kind of a little tough time down there in Texas. I see where a lot of the highways are being reconstructed down there. And I was, I was down there till Saturday evening and, but Sunday when the shooting started, I, I think that was a bad over and I could have been caught up in it myself. And I just like to see people everywhere, have more love for each other, be able to help those that have a problem with nothing to help or what kind of problem they have that if they realize that they have problems and need treatment, that we treat them, but if they need to be put in prison before this happens, I think they should be put in prison. But I just like to see more love, I look like people that's, I don't know, the devil is doing his job and I hope we forget about ours, with love and understanding for one another. And if we do this, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that the Lord is going to continue to bless us in the way that we have been blessed so far. We haven't had a tragedy such as that in this area as of yet and I'm hoping more love will continue to be among the citizens in North Carolina that we can spread it abroad in the other states. So, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Tyson?
Mr. Chairman, all I would like to say is that I would like to congratulate the Mercy Clinic and their board of directors for holding the first ever, and very successful, I might say, dinner downtown New Bern where they closed off Middle Street and lined up a table that went to full two blocks of Middle Street and they raised close to $100,000, I think, and I'm very disappointed when I waited till the last minute. I knew they had five, could seat 500 people and I kind of waited a little late and tried to get a ticket and they had already sold out and...
They had that on Middle Street?
Down that real quick, being a county commissioner does get you married for in this country. So, no, I actually, I mean, that's, that's a big deal when you have an event, a fundraiser like that and they desperately need the funds. Trust me, they desperately need the funding. They're funding, some of their funding grants have dried up. They do wonderful work for the citizens of many of the citizens of Craven County that they can't pay. They're, they're a free clinic and so that's a great deal. I particularly would like to thank Charles Cushman and Gary, Gary?
Curry.
Curry. Gary Curry, I'm sorry, for helping to, to sell us the tickets for that event. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman, just one item I'd like to bring before the board. The chairman and myself have joined together and going to have a, a meeting at West Craven High School Auditorium on November the 28th at 6:30 in the evening. It will be a meeting that with District Attorney Scott Thomas, also our Health Director Scott Harrelson will be there, and we've invited some folks from law enforcement also. The purpose of this meeting will be to talk in detail about the opioid and heroin problem we have in Craven County. We've already had one in Coast City, I know, the folks there in the Vanceboro area have been asking the chairman and myself if we would join together and support one there. That area, as across the county, they're, they're being faced with a, a large number of folks OD cases on a regular basis, and so there's a lot of concern, and so I'd ask everybody to help spread the word and to come out and participate at that evening. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Lydon?
Sir, a couple of things. For all vets out there and in the audience, on 9 November at 11 o'clock, the Veterans Council will hold their free lunch for all veterans at the Armory, starting at 11 o'clock. I would recommend getting there early for parking, but the doors will open at 11. Program will start at 11:15. All you need is either an ID card, a veteran's card, or your DD 214. Getting back, Mr. Sherri's, think of vet program, any vet that's out there, I strongly recommend you putting this in the deeds office, registered deeds, you will not regret it, you will need it, I guarantee you, you're going to need it eventually, and it's an easy source to get there. I want to commend the staff for closing on 10 November, Marine Corps birthday, and say happy birthday to all my Marines out there, 243 years, and I look damn good. Next thing, I want to thank Commissioner Jones for the invitation last week to attend the Farm Bureau Annual Banquet. What a, what a, what a spread that was put on there, and I thank you for that. If anybody has any pull with our elected officials in Raleigh, somebody needs to take a serious look at early voting. There is a lot of your money being spent on early voting that you're, and I, and this board, is paying for, and we're talking thousands of dollars, and for 11 days, only 142 people came out and voted for early voting. That is sad, and that's a lot of money that you're throwing out. General elections, I understand, municipal elections, you may want to think that. We need to think that, but I understand it's more of a state issue to move forward on, but we had more workers than we had voters on given days that showed up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Had the pleasure of attending the Marine Corps' 140, or, excuse me, 242nd Birthday Celebration at Cherry Point this past week. It was a delightful opportunity to, and if folks haven't had the chance to go do that, it is something really special to get to do, and you, you see the uniforms that were, that were used throughout the various conflicts of the Marine Corps participation and throughout the globe, and it was just a wonderful tribute to the men and women that have given their lives and have served for our country, and it was a great opportunity, and Colonel Ferry did a fabulous job, as usual. The county Board of Commissioners did some business this evening, or this afternoon, in a work session, and I just, I just feel compelled to let the public know that we kind of did do it. We engaged in a number of, of activities this afternoon that weren't, that didn't take place while we were here tonight, and I just thought that it would be helpful for the record that people know this. We did kind of move forward on identifying and accepting of some recommendations from the staff to go forward and hire a person to work on the animal control section of the department, and I think that that will be very welcome, and of course, that follows on with the passage of some ordinances that we had recently done in animal control. As you folks here know, this evening, we did take some time to consider the Equal Rights Amendment and decided to move forward with the letter that's going to the General Assembly, and thank you very much for your participation in that. RCS, Religious Community Service, did come forward to talk to us about a homeless program that they're having for veterans in our community, and it appears as though we will be moving forward with participating in that program financially. Of course, the, the county does put, put some resources towards veterans programs already, but we believe that it's, it's a moral responsibility and an obligation to this community since we are among the highest locales that, that is home to our veteran community through, in North Carolina. So we did decide to put some of the people's money toward that, and then we have asked the staff to look at the tall structures ordinance regarding wind turbines. So if the community has got any more questions about that, they can, of course, take it up with the county staff or any of the county commissioners, but we did take on that business before this formal meeting this evening. We do have an ACT meeting on Thursday. If any of the commissioners have got anything that you'd like me to bring forward to that, and we've also got an East Carolina Council meeting on Thursday evening, I'll be attending both those meetings. So if there's anything that you need me to bring forward, please let me know. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Back in October, we ran a caravan on opioid and heroin, and I have a meeting tomorrow at 3:00 to 5:00 with that committee and the county manager and county clerk on pursuing how we're going to carry out that program within the county and get municipalities involved. That'll be a, a very good meeting, two hour meeting, and hopefully, we'll be able to come up with some good plans on that. In addition to that, I have a meeting on Thursday on Tuscarawo and the Solid Waste Board, and that's about it. At this point, I'd ask for an adjournment.
So move.
We're adjoint, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.